And the staff, I want to thank our few guests that are out here tonight and thank those that were able to participate last month. We had a good productive meeting as well. The, the first item on the agenda is the invocation and I'm going to ask Mr. Bakoe to do that, if you don't mind, sir.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for life, health, and strength. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless each and every individual that's assembled here today. Bless them in a special way. Bless their families as well. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be in the midst of that. Everything that we do, we for the betterment of our city. In Jesus' name we do pray.
Amen. Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, the next item is the minutes. The commissioners have received their package, had a chance to review them. I would like to ask if there are any changes, corrections, or comments regarding the last month's minutes.
They were approved of minutes.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. We have the first item, oh, excuse me, the first actual item on the agenda that pertains to planning is PC 2021-31. And if the staff could give report, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so this is 250, 517 West Suntory Street. My case is confused. They were requesting to rezone from NC 6.2, which is neighborhood conservation, to Central Business District, which is a commercial zoning district. Here's an aerial photo of the vicinity. This is on the corner of West Suntory Street and Chase Street. And it is a vacant lot currently. The zoning map is NC 6.2, as are most of the properties around it. Future land use is also neighborhood conservation in keeping with the existing built-out landscape. Here is a comparison of the current zoning neighborhood conservation intended to protect the character and function of established neighborhoods. It does permit single-family detached duplexes and also home occupations. And then the requested zoning is Central Business District, which is mixed use. It can be commercial residential, or both of the above. And this is a use chart for commercial uses. The highlighted portions are showing what is allowed as far as commercial uses. Neighborhood conservation, no commercial uses outside of home occupations, whereas the requested zoning, Central Business District, does kind of run the gamut of what is allowed commercially as uses. So it's a definitely more intense use that's being requested. All right, here's some pictures. It is a corner lot, West Suntory Street. And it is a corner lot, West Suntory Street and Chase Street. So here's a couple photos. And you can see the view along Suntory Street is predominantly a single-family homes residential uses. So again, adjacent property is overwhelmingly residential, and this does appear to be a case of illegal spot zoning, which the State Supreme Court defines as the process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owners of the property and to the detriment of other owners surrounding. And you can just see again, the current zoning map is all the yellow is neighborhood conservation. There's a little bit of open space recreation and a little bit of campus, but it's overwhelmingly residential use. The guide to land use planning does say that the mere fact that a property adjoins residential property and wants to be commercial does not make it spot zoning. And they do point to a case, Knowles versus City of Aiken, Knowles versus the City of Aiken, where the city zoned our residential property. It wasn't residential and they zoned it commercial, but it had historically been commercial, so it was not considered spot zoning. And this particular parcel has been residential. And we were able to look at aerial photos, and there was a house on the lot back in 2011. So the current zoning was adopted with the 2018 Unified Development Ordinance due to adjacent residential use, historic residential use, and prescribed future land use. And that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm going to open up for the commissioners, but I do have a question regarding the applicant. I don't know if they're here tonight or not, but were they explained that the CBD would be considered spot zoning and that were there other zoning types offered that would be more appropriate?
Initially, we, when they applied for the rezoning, we said that any commercial use would probably be far-fetched and could be considered spot zoning. And we followed that up with the staff report, giving the definition of spot zoning. And staff felt that there was this pretty strong case that that was occurring in this instance. And really, no kickback from the applicant besides wanting to go through with the process and see what happens.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing portion of this. If there's anyone here to speak on behalf or against this request, I invite you to come forward. Seeing that there are none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Well, since it would be considered spot zoning, then he would have no other choice but to decline.
Besides, I knew that you would be the one. And I thank you for it, because there's a lot of silence here. Okay, so I have a motion to deny the request. Do I have a second? I have a motion, second to deny. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of denying the request, say aye. And those for not to say nay, and the ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Tines. PC 2021-32. Well, my goodness, they had a change out on us. How are you doing, sir?
Rex, how are you?
Oh, I'm doing great, thank you. Staff report, please.
Okay. It is to request a rezon from Activity Center to Commercial General. The facility map confirms that the property is located in the 1900 block of Second Loop Road between South Penn Drive and Baffert Raisin Drive. The location map identifies that the address of the property is 1926 Second Loop Road. The zoning map shows that the property is at Activity Center. Activity Center zoning district is intended for misuse available outside of the Central Business District. The future land use map identifies the property as commercial auto-urban, surrounded by commercial auto-urban to the north, to the south, to the east, and also to the west. According to Table 1-2.7.4, alcohol beverage sales off-site consumption is not permitted in the Activity Center zoning district. If the commercial property gets approval for rezoning to Commercial General, the proposed commercial use would be allowed and the applicant can proceed with sale of the property. And these are site photos of the property. If the property is approved or rezoning, it would trigger buffering to the right side of the property. And this concludes staff's report.
Cassidy, thank you. It says on the application, the agenda item that they're on Commercial General.
Yes, sir.
And Commercial General, if I recall correctly, would allow, would it allow for alcohol sales?
Oh, yes, sir. On this line right here, alcohol beverage sales off-site consumption, if it is approved, that is permitted in the Commercial General zoning district.
Okay. Now, what is the difference between all two commercial?
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
What is the difference between all two commercial?
Commercial auto-urban?
Right.
That's just a future land use.
The reason I bring this up is, I think as commissioners, we can't make a decision based on someone maybe wanting to sell alcohol. We have to consider the neighborhoods, the adjacent properties, which has typically been in the old designation, B3, or that area, has it not, or at least B2.
B2.
I guess that whether the owner prefers to have alcohol sales there or not, we should not make a decision based on that. But I am concerned about the neighbors that join.
Of course.
I know that Second Loop neighborhood associations all along Second Loop are very, very aggressive. They're very well organized. And in fact, I'm surprised they're not here tonight. Could staff share with the commissioners?
You know, I did talk to the applicant on the phone, and he's currently here to answer any questions. Now, there is a second option for a salon, and that is permitting any Activity Center zoning designation, as well as the Commercial General zoning designation as well.
Right. But you're saying the alcohol will be allowed as well?
Yes, that's the applicant's first choice.
Yeah, so like I said, whether he puts a salon there or alcohol sales, we have to make a decision on what's in the best interest of the body, not just, you know, because, anyway.
The old designation of the B2 zoning designation is very similar to the Unified Development Code designation of Activity Center. You know, we looked at some of the allowed uses that were allowed in the old B2 district, some of the allowed uses that were in the Activity Center. So the existing zoning, some of the ones we've had in the past where, you know, the zoning didn't translate as well, this is not the case in this one.
That's what I was trying to get to. Thank you.
That's right, yeah. And I think that's the point that was trying to be made, but the Activity Center is very similar to the old B2 zoning designation. So the allowed uses over the past, you know, 10, 15 years have not changed dramatically with the adoption of the Unified Development Code in this Activity Center zoning. You know, the developed area of the site is currently, or in the past, I think it was an embroidery shop there. And the closest occurrence of a general commercial district is about, I think, 2,500 feet away from this site. We measured from the site. So it's, and that's up at the corner of Cashew and Second Loop, at the light there where the drugstore is, and I think Walmart's back behind it.
Can you put a salon on Activity Center?
Yes, that is permitted.
As commercial retail.
Okay.
That's right. You can put a number of commercial retail uses.
Right.
Anything from potentially a convenience store, you know, gift shops, anything of that nature, personal services like salons.
Barbershops.
Law offices, even doctors' offices, anything of that nature.
Certainly don't want to take away, or we don't want to take away from the applicant's opportunity to better himself with this property. But at the same time, I'm concerned about the neighbors. And do the commissioners have questions of staff? I don't see no problem. Are you getting calls from the community?
Well, we actually got an email today pertaining to this particular use. And the applicant that emailed us today, he doesn't want, he's against the rezoning. And that applicant is in the vicinity.
He's near the site.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you need to know that.
No, no, no.
But that's the only complaint we had.
All right. Any further questions? I'll open the public hearing and maybe have them would like to come forward too. No further questions of staff right at the moment. I will, excuse me, I thought someone said some. I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward to speak on behalf or against, sir.
Yes, sir.
Our policy is we ask you to come to the podium and give us your name.
My name is Joe Sal. My wife is the owner of the property at Second Loop Road. It was previously a gift store, monogram shop, sentias, monograms, and more. During COVID, during the days that she was forced to close, unfortunately, we got to the point that we could no longer sustain the business. So we sold out of merchandise and had decided to close the gift shop, sold the monogram machine and everything, and have just vocally said that we wanted to sell the property. We have one person who has made us a offer for the property. He's currently a business member here in the community now. He owns several restaurants, several fuel centers. He would like the opportunity to put a liquor store there. We have already gone to the Department of Revenue and applied for liquor license and presented all of the newspaper correspondence and received no objections through the state. And it was after that that we were notified, you know, that, hey, you've got to check the zone. I'm not, you know, real into real estate and zoning and everything. So of course, you know, we did that. And having the opportunity to sell this property and get rid of this burden, if you will, we were, you know, well worth a hundred dollars to see if we could come up here and see if we could get this rezoned. I'm sorry that one person did object to it. There are several liquor stores that are reasonably close. There's one on Cashew, right around the corner from the Walmart neighborhood grocery. There's one on Second Loop down by the food line. So, I mean, there's liquor stores in the vicinity. I don't really know of anything else to say other than this was just an opportunity for us to get something that happened during COVID, you know, to turn out to be a positive and get this, you know, away from us so that somebody else could better themselves. You know, this guy has the means and the ability. You know, he's an entrepreneur. He has businesses in Ohio, South Carolina, Georgia. He has the means to do this. And, you know, I would love to be able to give him that opportunity if we could.
So first of all, thank you so much for coming forward. It certainly explains a lot of things. And we have compassion for what you and your wife have been through. We certainly don't want to hinder that. Our job, unfortunately, is to also consider everyone. And we are, we are recommending body. Your real, the decision makers are going to be city council, you know, whether we, if we pass this forward, you're going to have to go through city council, whether we recommend, up or down.
Yes, sir.
I need input from the commissioners on this because the thing that keeps gnawing at me is this would be a B2 if we hadn't gone through our recent change. And I just wonder, would that be spot zoning if you changed it?
It's, it is a commercial area. The Commercial General is a more intense commercial use. So it is borderline, I believe. You know, it is, it is commercial, and it's changing to a commercial use if approved. But it is definitely borderline on spot zoning. The other, the other factor is that, you know, the Commercial General is typically, you know, by definition, a larger lot commercial as well. It's the Walgreens, your fueling stations, your, you know, your Walmart, your Home Depot, you know, your larger commercially developed sites, your strip malls and things of this nature. And in this area, you know, the commercial in this area is predominantly some of the smaller lots. That's not to say some acreage couldn't be assembled. And in that case, if it was assembled, it might, you know, change over to general commercial and be a more viable site for such development. But as it exists, you know, you know, I think the Activity Center zoning as compared to the B2 was the right decision, to period.
Mr. Soul, you're prospective buyer, entrepreneur.
Yes, sir.
Does he have other businesses that would fit?
Well, I mean, he does. And I know that you had mentioned that a convenience store could go there, which is confusing to me.
It is. It's very, that's one of the.
Because a convenience store would sell alcohol, even though it's not liquor, it would sell alcohol. When we were told that couldn't be. So, I mean, a convenience store would probably be interesting to him. One of the other things he was interested in, but we were told it couldn't be done in an Activity Center, just tonight's the first I heard that it could be. Well, Alfred sent a letter to my wife, I didn't get it, but she did, that one of the things he was interested in was doing a beauty salon and renting books. But we were told then that that wasn't allowable as well. And that's where he wanted to really pursue the liquor store. So this was, like I said, news to me today about the beauty salon, and I can present that to him.
I'd like to say this, and I'm hugging this, and Miss Murray, I know you want to say something, but it's not that we haven't, well, maybe some do. It's not that we're trying to eliminate the liquor store. It's what could go there that could be more difficult for the neighborhood, like a nightclub, loud music. I mean, that Commercial General gets the worst of, well, the most impactful of the impactful.
I got you.
So liquor store, it's not because it's liquor, I think, is what it may do to the neighbors if it does that. And commissioners, help me out. I think we're across the board on this thing, and it's kind of a.
Well, the way I'm looking at it, you know, if it's commercial property, you want to do a business, then that's, you know, you see, I don't see, that's business. That's do, you don't want to hinder nobody from making money, which we went to us before. And then I don't see no problem, you know.
I agree with you.
Miss Murray?
Okay. As, as of the way the property is zoned now, can they sell alcohol and liquor there?
No, ma'am, they cannot.
Okay, so that's why they asked.
They could sell alcohol there as long as it is not the, like a convenience store would. Our ordinance defines alcohol beverage off-site consumption as a store that predominantly sells alcohol, like a liquor store or a party shop. So they could set up a convenience store there or a grocery, or a small grocery store of some sort. And if they sold a portion of, you know, less than 50% alcohol, then that could occur as it is. What it doesn't allow, that's usually associated with a convenience store now, are fuel pumps. So it wouldn't allow a gas station there. But the Commercial General would allow a gas station there, you know, a fueling station. Right now, it would only allow, you know, retail sales, which would be like a convenience store or a grocery store.
Has that recently changed on the C-stores, not allowing the gas, but allowing the retail sales?
It separated out. This ordinance clearly has a section just for a fueling station. And it reserves those for Commercial General. Oh, no, I'm wrong. Activity Center does allow that. It's a conditional use.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it does.
Full operating C-store there.
That's right.
I mean, the site's big enough unless you've got the corner.
That's right.
Mr. Roger Pope, you still on that before? Do you know if that's still in his estate or even?
I don't think he owns it anymore.
All right.
So as it stands right now, with, he couldn't, he could not just put a liquor store of, full liquor store there.
That's right, as it stands right now.
From my understanding, Department of Revenue, if you have a liquor store, that is the only thing that you can sell that establishment. They do not allow any other item to be sold. If the Department of Revenue was coming to a liquor store and you had two cases of water in your storage room, you could be fine because that could be deemed as mixed, and they could shut you down. So there can be no other item but liquor for sale in that type of field.
But what they can do is they can divide it up into two different, two different sites. Sell the liquor on one side.
Sort of like what Mickey Dins does. They have two different doors. You have one entrance for liquor, one entrance for beer.
So that's just a loophole to get around that. So I mean, then you can't sell nothing with liquor there. They just put a wall down the middle of the two doors. That forgets all that.
Correct.
Correct.
And another, the gentleman who's interested in the property, he doesn't like it the way it looks now. It's, it looks like grandma's house. You know, so he wants to modernize it, redo the siding, redo the, what do you call them, lines, to make it look like it's a more, a nicer part of Florence.
Should they want to participate or rent either park him up beside it? Is he going to try to buy that or rent it or what?
I don't think so. I think Hugel owns that. And that's, you know, their intentions, from what I understand, is that that business is going to grow at that location, and they're going to adopt that for additional parking.
On this map here, to the left, go back to.
Yeah, this, if you don't mind, this area here.
Yeah. Right at the corner.
Yeah, I've looked at the plans when Hugel bought that, and their future expansion is just additional park. Never can have enough parking here.
That's what they said. Questions? More questions? Mr. Soul, I'm sorry, yeah, if you'll hold on just a minute. Yes, sir.
And I'll also add that in, in the Activity Center, you can also have alcohol beverage sales onsite as well. So you could have like a small bar, pub of that sort. But it's very restrictive in that, you know, it has to, if it's next to a residential use, which I believe this one is, that it has to be, you know, 500 feet from other alcohol beverage sites. Patron seating must be indoors, no music audible beyond the property line, and that it has to be in a retail center that contains tenant spaces devoted to at least two businesses other than, than alcohol beverage sales. So I think this site would be too small. Then alcohol beverage sales. So I think this site would be too small to accomplish that anyway. As it's known, but, but that is allowed, but it, it can't be, again, it, it's set up so that it can't be the predominant activity.
Any more questions to Mr. Soul? Mr. Soul, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Very helpful for you coming up and um, uh, having no one else um to speak, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Call for motion. Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. I, I'd just like to say that, um. The discussion tonight is not whether liquor or alcohol should be sold there. Uh, is that a residential lot that is touching it in the back? What is, what is that business? What is that property?
Um, that's.
Yeah, please, come forward.
Yes. So, um, this is no longer there. That used to be the carehouse.
Okay.
It has been, um, completely removed.
Okay.
Um, Hope Health is here.
Right.
And it's all, all the way back to the next street. All belongs to Hope Health along back up to Second Loop. So all the way down Patton and all the way back across to, I don't know the name of the street right here, is all Hope Health now.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, we have a, a motion and a second. I had discussion, but anyone else like to have discussion before the vote? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving is submitted. Show of hands. All those not in favor, show of hands. And we have one extension. Okay, so we are tied with one abstaining. Where does that go, Mr. Dudley?
Well, we can, someone could bring forward a, another motion, um.
I, I would like to bring forward a motion on that as, okay. My motion is that we postpone this vote to next month. And give Mr. Soul a chance to have a discussion with his prospective buyer. And tell him that we are locked up on this decision. And would he consider an alternative use without changing the zoning? Um, nothing against that use, but if he is the entrepreneur that we hope that he is. Uh, he can still improve that, um, property and, and hopefully put an alternative use in there. So my motion is to postpone to next month and ask Mr. Soul to report back to planning. Uh, after he's had a discussion, um, with his prospective buyer. That's my motion deserves that second. I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no discussion, I'm called for the vote to postpone to next month. And we will vote again depending on what comes from your conversation. Um, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Light signs nay. That's happy. Thank you, Mr. Soul. Really appreciate your participation and good luck with your, your buyer.
Mr. Soul, I mean, may I add something real quick? We, we staff would be glad to sit down with you and, um, and I'd be glad to be in that meeting. And we can, we can supply all of these charts and, and get any information together and be very clear on what's allowed and not allowed.
We're, we're the largest grocery store distributor in the state of South.
I love the pitch, that's good. All right, thank you all. Um, the last matter, um, is PC twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three. This is a request for sketch plan review.
You're getting the whole team tonight.
I mean, we're, we're at the eighteen in the night.
All right, um, oops. Yes, this is a. Uh, request for sketch plan review for a townhouse development located on Celebration Boulevard. And it will be behind the Metiera Mexican Restaurant, if you're familiar with that, on Celebration Boulevard. The owners of the property, which is the family that owns Metiera, wishes to develop. Um, and it is, it is all done, um, commercial general and residential uses for multifamily and, um. Attached single families such as townhouses are permitted uses in the commercial general. And the future land uses for commercial auto urban. Sorry, I'm going to hit myself. Um, the owners want to subdivide their property. This is the, the entire parcel and then the blue line down the middle is where they want to plaid out. And that back half is where they'll build these townhouses. And these townhouses will be identical to those that are being built, just kitty corner to it, um, where you see all the twelve hundreds. That's, um, some townhouses that have been constructed in the past. And so the same builder is doing them here as well. And they would have access to the back of that lot through the fifty-foot, um, easement. That's shown on the plot on the right side that was divided out back in twenty, I think it was thirteen. Um, to provide access to the parcel, um, on the right of that where another developer wants to put townhouses as well. So basically we'd have infill behind the commercial parcels of townhouses for a mixed-use development. So that is, um, as you can see, the sketch plan provides for any unit building. And it does meet the requirements that each one could be individually sold. And with common area for parking and the requisite landscaping and buffering along there. So that concludes staff's report.
Question and open up with commissioners. Could you go back to that? That's good. The restaurant is giving up a lot of parking, I assume.
That's correct, yes.
Will they have enough parking per code?
Yes, they will.
Okay. And so the only ingress, ingress will be through the drives of the restaurant?
Uh, no, if you, as you're looking at that on the south side between the.
Not even close.
Yes, right there will be paved in.
Oh, okay.
And there, there was a previous, um, sketch plan that came before planning commission that hasn't, um. Yet on the development side. It's actually planned to occur right here and they'll share the same, same access. And that, and that same access was approved for it by planning commission for this development.
And they're both the same developers?
Different developers, um, but the, the ingress, egress easement is written such that it supplies access to that.
Cool. Any discussion or, excuse me, any questions for staff? Kind of bumpers required between, yeah, fired up and.
Um, none is really required between the townhouses and the commercial upfront. The one against Carlton Road, because that is a subdivision, it's in the county, but it's a, a single-family residential area. We've already talked to the developer and he has said he would leave all that existing vegetation up.
And what about fired up, which is the building?
Uh, fire it up is that one.
Yeah, now, I guess there's not a setback between a drive and a building.
Would be what, three feet? Because it's a drive vehicle access, so it would be the three-foot buffer, um, that's required anywhere else.
Do you just be driving down an alley?
Basically, yes.
It's wide, it's wide enough to support two-way traffic. I believe that.
It's fifty feet.
Fifty feet, yes, it's, it's plenty wide to support.
Time to see you, but that's good. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion. Thank you. I have a motion to approve, have a second, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Light signs nay. Thank you. Mrs. Dudley, any old new business? Don't bring up that stuff we're going to be doing here pretty soon.
While studying and reading that, we're going to have to do.
All the, the, the cop plan that's, that's coming up, yeah. We, uh, we will also try to queue you guys into any, um, training requirements. I know we need to get our, our, um, hour or so of training in, a few hours of training in. We'll, we'll try to throw some opportunities with you with, uh, the one positive thing out of COVID. Has been that we've been able to have some virtual trainings or, or there's more of those available. So I may, um, subscribe to a few of those and, and, and let you guys participate in some of that to get your hours.
Well, the best use of. Virtual.
That's right, that's right. They have been a lot more lenient on virtual credits and such. Real research of opportunities and. But we are, uh, we are working through the comprehensive planning process. Um, we are, uh, a, a, a little, obviously a little behind on that. We're also working through a downtown master plan with Candy Keast as well. We plan to have both, um, out for, you know, public consumption. And, uh, for the planning commission review by later this fall, early winter. And looking for an early first of the year ad- adoption to city council if all goes well with the public review site.
Are there any more of those, um. Virtual business with Candice and Keith?
We, we're in the process. We have a steering committee put together for the, the comprehensive plan. Or a, uh, advisory council put together for the, the comprehensive plan. We're working, we're on the last meeting this month with that committee. After that, they'll give us a draft version, which staff will go through and take a look at. And then the next series of meetings will be public meetings once the draft version of the comp plan is released. So we will be having more, uh, public meetings, but they'll be for review of the comp. So that's the next step. And obviously I'll, I'll get all of the boards and commission. Most likely some copies after staff reviews, but before it goes out to the pub, general pub.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Moses? I moved up you do.